Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. We're here this afternoon for a work session and our discussion item is zoned fire restrictions and bans. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner John Kofolas and Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally. We also have our County Manager, Loretta Volker, with us. From the Sheriff's Office, we have Justin Weitzel from our Emergency Services Director, and Tim Keaton, Captain of the Sheriff's Office. And we also actually have the Sheriff in the audience and our Assistant County Manager, Lori Kadrich. So, welcome, everyone, and we're excited to hear about this topic, and we'll let you get started.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, for years, this was said before we started this session just a few minutes ago, that the item of looking at zoned fire restrictions or fire restrictions other than across the county has been brought up numerous times over the years since I've been here for 26 years now. So, we spent some time this winter really trying to decide what that would look like, and that's why we're here today is to have a work session about what the Sheriff's Office has come up with and see if you all had any questions or concerns, but really just kind of guiding and giving you an overview of what we have planned for this summer. So, we'll jump into it here, but as you all know, currently, we implement fire restrictions countywide and they're triggered by the fire dangers. A lot of times, we either over or under-restrict based on certain areas, obviously. The forested areas where the U.S. Forest Service has, a lot of times, they go into fire restrictions before we do. And sometimes, the lower grasslands are a lot more dry than the higher elevations because of rain or snow. So, I know it's a little hard to talk about fire restrictions when it's zero degrees outside and snow on the ground, but I figured this was a good time to get it planned and prepared rather than waiting until we're into the fire restrictions themselves. So, I did provide you with the document that kind of follows along with the PowerPoint, but what we're looking at is a zone-based approach. So, those zones are below 6,000, 6,000 to 9,000, which is called the foothills. The below 6,000 is typically referred to as the plains, and then above 9,000, which is the east divide. So, those zones are the same zones that the National Weather Service uses for fire weather. And they obviously, that image that I have, which is this image here, you can see the dark lines, the dark black lines. So, below or furthest to the east, to the right hand, is the plains. Below 6,000, the middle section is 6,000 to 9,000, and then far left is above 9,000. And those are the fire weather zones. The fire weather zones are based out of Boulder. So, these actually go down into Boulder County, but we just clipped it off at Laramie County to show these are just restrictions in Laramie County. So, that image, I'll talk about a little bit more here in a minute, but that's kind of the idea. The benefits of zoned base approach, we can do more targeted fire restrictions. Like I talked about, a lot of times, we see in the fall and early spring, before the rains, before green up, the lower elevations are more in drought and can have those conditions which meet the threshold of having fire restrictions, but the higher elevations, because of the snow, maybe they're not quite there. So, more of a targeted. It also increases our flexibility and efficiency of doing fire restrictions. Again, when we do countywide, it's a lot of time spent enforcing countywide, and it's hard to tell people when it's raining or snowing up in a high country that we're in fire restrictions because of the conditions in the lower elevations. And this obviously creates enhanced public safety through localized response, and we can work better with the other entities as well. Some of the challenges and considerations when we looked at zoned fire restrictions are obviously enforcement complexity, and I'll talk about that a little bit further here in a second. But obviously, getting the public to recognize whether they're, which zone they're in, and how would we do that, and I have a solution to that. And then, public communication and signage. Right now, when we go into fire restrictions, we put signs up in the canyons as people are heading west. So, we would have to work with Road and Bridge to alter those signs or figure out a better way to do that. A lot more messaging, probably on social media and those types of things, that we just have to be more robust about fire restrictions. And then, coordination with the other jurisdictions. I think that'll bring us into more alignment with the Forest Service when they go into restrictions. We'll be more prone, because we're not looking at it countywide, so hopefully, we'll align a little bit better. And the Forest Service is looking at something similar as well. And then, data and monitoring.
I'll give you for a second, Commissioner Shattuck McNally has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, you're good.
But I've been testifying on wildfire and prescribed bills all day. Actually, that's, I'm supposed to be doing one right now, but I've got someone else to read my statement for me. But I am curious. Signs are great, but, you know, everyone's distracted and not seeing signs on the roadway and stuff. But everyone's on their technology. Is there a way that maybe if someone is using Google Maps, that we could ask Google or other, I don't know what that looks like, to flash a sign when you get in a certain area, if you're camping or hiking, that, hey, this area is on fire restrictions? Just like, you know, Google has, hey, know, Google has, hey, is there still stalled vehicle here, you know, or I say yes onto my Bluetooth, or, you know, there's an accident or slowdown. Is there something that maybe these technology companies could help us with? Just, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but it might be helping us also. Here's fire restrictions. Also, sign up for no call alerts. You know, click here, sign up for alerts. I'm just curious if that's something we have looked at or possible, and just curious about that.
No, it's a great question. Excellent question, and it is something we're working on. I'm working with the GIS team from Laramie County to create, that's what that image is, from a public portal that the community would have access to, and I can show you a little bit more of that after the presentation to kind of cover that issue a little bit more, if that's okay. Perfect. Data and monitoring requirements, again, I'm working with the National Weather Service and also GIS to figure out how we monitor and track that data, which we've done over the years, and every time I've come to the Board and asked for implementation of restrictions, we've, you know, we use those metrics and indices, and it'd be the same, but actually looking at it zone by zone rather than countywide. So, but I have, it's basically the same indices. The weather trend's been a little bit modified, but it's the same data and monitoring and using science as state statute requires us to utilize. So, the next steps, obviously, I talked about it, working with Road and Bridge, GIS, and some of the other technology experts, IT department from the county, to figure out how we can best get the information out and make sure we're keeping that up to date and consistent across the messaging throughout. Develop a clear communication strategy, working with our public information officers, as well as the county public information officers, to make sure, again, that we have a consistent message and that everybody knows where to go to find that information when they need it, or if they're heading out to go camping, they could pull it up on their phone, hopefully before, because connectivity, as soon as you get too far west of Laramie County, you lose that connectivity. So, something to work on. And then, obviously, establishing a timeline for activating before the high-fire danger season. And I would like to be able to say I could predict when that high-fire danger season's going to be here, but I can't. It could be here this weekend. As we all know, it's supposed to be sixty, so we're still in drought conditions across the county, which is interesting that we're still in drought, even though we still have snow on the ground. So, one of those things, I'm just trying to be aware of, but knowing that we can have all this implemented before the normal fire season. So, the biggest thing is, you know, by taking all these thresholds, putting them into a platform, having that access to it will give the county a better ability to implement these restrictions based on zones, which is a little bit more like using a scalpel rather than a machete to implement these. And then, the other thing we haven't looked at in the past is the National Planning Level Five. The National Planning Level give us an idea what resources are available, and it really doesn't impact us until we hit that National Planning Level Five. But in the past, we just looked at the Regional Planning Level, which is Region Two, that goes up into South Dakota, Wyoming, and Colorado, and a little bit of Kansas for resources. But National Planning Level, as we saw during the Alexander and the Pearl Fire, especially on Alexander Mountain Fire, we were really struggling to get any kind of national resources because they were all busy in other places, and we were at National Planning Level Five, and we struggled to get any resources from outside of Colorado, and it really hindered what we could do on the incident. Luckily for us, we were able to get the incidents taken care of pretty quick, but we really struggled to get resources from outside the area.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
I'm going to carefully ask this question. So, last year, this was already a concern about getting outside resources or national response due to the, I think it was, most of the Western U.S. was having some kind of response. So, knowing that statewide and federally and countywide, we're all seeing reductions in funding, and we're in a drought, and looking forward to the year-long fire season, pretty much something that we have to start planning and thinking about now, and we're having this conversation. Are you concerned about resources and ability to have all the tools you need in your toolbox this coming year? Just simply yes or no, I guess. I don't want to, I'm not trying to lead you, but I just hear what you're saying, and if you, if we had all this last year, when we had all those, all those fires going on, and we just got done with the Los Angeles fire, all those fires, I'm just wondering what that looks like for this year. We have to be at least thinking about this and being concerned.
It's something we're always thinking about. The Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff's Support and Command Staff Support, we were able to bump our initial attack module from the eleven that we had last year. We'll have a full twenty-person crew in Laramie County this year. So, as far as local resources, we've staffed up heavy to offset some of those concerns that we may see. So, we will have twenty, a twenty-person crew available from April till through October. So, locally, I don't see a huge concern, because we also have, we had seventy-five roughly on-call firefighters, and we've had at least fifty applications for our on-call firefighter program again this year. So, we'll be close to around a hundred on-call firefighters to supplement or add to our twenty-person crew this year. As far as the national resources that are available, right now, I'm not concerned because typically, those seasonals and the ones of concern don't come on until typically May, April, May, and so we still have a little bit of a window to see what's going to happen. I'm going to continue to monitor and track and see what happens with that, but right now, I'm not concerned because everybody I've been talking to are still working towards employment, so I don't know that there's going to be a huge impact at this point. That could obviously change, and something that Tim and I are keeping close tabs on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Keaton with the Sheriff's Office. And just to get a little bit further in the weeds on that, I just want to thank each of you, and Commissioner Shattuck McNally specifically. A lot of the mitigation, a lot of the money, the vast majority of the money, that we brought on this twenty-person crew with is the mitigation grant that is funding these positions for a short window. So, it's not any county tax dollars that are going to do this, but at a moment's notice, as the first spark and the first plume of smoke starts coming up, we can redirect those resources immediately to go fight as an initial attack. And we're going, the plan is to kind of predispose them in a lot of different areas in five-to-six-man teams or five-to-six-person teams. So, I just wanted to kind of bring you guys up to speed on where that came from. That mitigation work, while it will have long-lasting impacts into the future to lessen the significance of future fires, it also is like a pre-deployed initial attack teams all over the place who can be there very, very quickly. So, it's, those dollars are going very, very far.
Commissioner Kavales, any questions?
Please go ahead. Thank you. Thanks, colleagues. I have a couple of questions. So, we would still be using the factors that we have historically been using, only we would be, there's a way of determining how those factors apply at the different elevations or in the different zones. Can you please say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, and I can actually show that real quick, if I can find it. Let me pull it up real quick. Oh, there it is. So, these are the indices that we've looked at in the past. This should look, the one on, this graph over here on the right should look familiar to you. All the colors are a little bit off up on the screen, but these are the indices, the average spread component, the average thousand hours, average energy release component, the Keach-Birham Drought Index, Planning Level, the Four Collins Planning Level, which is now the Northern Colorado Planning Level, the Rocky Mountain Planning Level that I talked about was Wyoming, South Dakota, a little bit of Kansas and Colorado, and then the weather trend, which I talked about. But these are the same components, and instead of looking at them holistically and saying, well, how many of these totally, we're now looking at them on the plains, which is just the top one here. The foothills are these weather stations over here. So, Buckeye is the only plains weather station that we have, and then Redfeather Estes, Redstone are the three weather stations that are in the foothills, or that six-to-nine-thousand-foot elevation. And then, Harbison Meadow, Corral Creek, and Pickle Gulch are on that east divide above nine thousand that we look at to get these numbers. So, we're still looking at the exact same numbers that we've talked about in the past. We're just looking at it by zone now rather than across the board. The FTC, the planning levels will be added to each of these as well. And then, the weather trend, there'll be a weather trend for the plains, a weather trend for the foothills, and a weather trend for the east divide based on precipitation, winds, max temperature, and humidity. So, for each of those zones rather than all of Laramie County. So, it should be a little bit more, like I said, scalpel rather than a machete, looking at it across the county.
Just a little bit of follow-up. And remind us again, Justin, on the ground, how do we actually gather this information? I mean, is somebody, I mean, we know if it's raining, how do we determine soil moisture? Somebody going out, taking samples? Can you tell us?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to tell you. So, as far as, so like the thousand hours, it's anything over four inches and bigger that's laying on the ground. So, a log, a tree limb, anything that's fallen off a tree and landed on the ground. There are certain, the weather stations are constantly taking ten-hour fuel moistures. They have fuel sticks on each of the weather stations that I've identified up there, and from those, they can use a formula to come up with the thousand hours, the hundred hours, and those types of things. Well, those weather stations, every day, update are at thirteen-hundred across the nation, and then they spit out algorithms for all these other pieces. The Drought Index is monitored across the nation, and we get updates every week on what the Drought Index is. So, those are computer-based models that figure that out, and we look at those on a, within the Internet to find out what those are. So, these are actually the indices that we're seeing. Well, I haven't updated this in a while, but they're pretty close to where we're at for the indices right now, except for the planning levels, they're all at one, and the weather trends, obviously, would be a one or a zero, basically, right now with the predicted weather.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's very helpful. I have two more questions, but I'll pause to see if you have any, or Commissioner, and if time allows, I'd like to offer my other two questions in a bit.
Sure. I'll just ask one question that sort of relates to the chart that's up there, because I'm glad we're using this approach. I think it's great to do this by zones. It's something that, you know, we've been asking you, I mean, I know you've been thinking about it, so I'm glad we have a plan for moving forward with that. My question is, you know, with one weather station on the plains, is that indicative of all the, I mean, do we, you know, I mean, that's, that one weather station for the plains is all the plains areas, which are a lot more than just the Buckeye area. So, what does that look like? Is there any hopes of getting something else that would indicate areas in other parts of the county that are also plains areas? Or do you feel like that that one spot is a good enough measure to extrapolate, you know, the conditions in the rest of the county?
No, and that's an excellent question, right? It looks like not getting a lot of data. So, the data that we are getting from that weather station, if we had more weather stations in the plains, that would be ideal. Right now, we don't. That, that weather station, Buckeye, is actually owned by the Sheriff's Office. We bought it eight years ago, and they're about seventeen thousand dollars apiece back then. They're a significant purchase, and then to get it up on the system, we pay a contract about five thousand to seven thousand dollars every year to have that data uploaded to a satellite and then shared nationwide. So, we continue to find funding to do that, and that's kind of the end of my presentation, is like, how do we, what's our strategic plan moving forward for wildfire, and what are we looking at, and where do we need to go? So, yes, ideally, we'd have more weather stations, but because I don't, what I do is I take the data that I get from Buckeye, and then I look at like Four Collins, Loveland Airport, and I know they have a new name. I can never remember the new name of Four Collins Loveland Airport, because that's what, Northern Colorado. You'd think that'd be easy. But I grew up here, so it's hard for me to get used to the change. So, but they do have a weather station out there. It's just not one that does fuel moistures, but I still get the wind, the temperature, those kind of things. And then, the National Weather Service, their forecasts are based on models and data that they're getting from weather stations other than just ours. These are fire weather stations. So, not all weather stations are fire weather stations, but these are. So, they're collecting a different type of data, but I collect all the data to look at it, so that I'm still pulling in more than is represented here. I just, it'll kind of be behind the scenes once we have this all built out.
Oh, thanks for explaining that and for the cost, because I wasn't aware that you own that one or how much they would cost. So, but it looks like clearly you're also taking other data into consideration as you make those decisions.
Yes. And Justin, keep me honest on this, weigh in if I'm a little bit inaccurate. From my understanding, before Laramie County Sheriff's Office funded this eight years ago so that we could collect more accurate data, we were basing decisions for our plains area on a similar weather station owned by the U.S. Forest Service in Nebraska?
No, those are Division of Fire Prevention and Control.
DFPCs?
And it's like on that.
Nebraska, Kansas, or Nebraska, Colorado border, roughly, out of that area. So, it's easy to say that plains, plains is plains is plains, but as we all understand, there's a, there can be significant weather differences between here and a hundred to a hundred and fifty miles east of here. So, we do believe, at least because of this one purchase and us maintaining that, we do, we are able to base decisions on far more accurate information than if we're relying on DFPC's weather stations out on the Kansas, Nebraska, Colorado border.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's important. Commissioner Shattuck McNally, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Kavales.
So, I'm building off your question, because I had a similar question about this, and of course, the winds look different in the Buckeye versus down by Johnstown or, you know, Windsor. So, first, let me just go back and say I'm really thrilled, because this is one of the first questions I had when I became Commissioner, was can we do this in a different, you know, different zones? Because it did seem like some areas were, the county are drier than others, and you, and certain seasons, they're, they change too. But I have an idea. When you talked about only having one in the Buckeye and having it where you, some farmers letting you use that, when I testified on a bill at the nine table last week, you know, the Eastern Plains representative was talking about how their brush fires are different than tree fires, and their conditions are different. And so, a lot of farmers, you know, are really concerned because they would like to be a part of that solution. So, there's certain municipality that lives, that's outside of Laramie County that owns a lot of farms here in Laramie County, and they have a partnership or want to be a good partner, and those farms are kind of left not being actively used right now. But that might be something we could reach out and see if they want to partner by letting us place stations on that property, because they're being kind of open, and they're throughout the county, and maybe, I know they have a fund or a group that was working together, maybe they would be willing to at least place one more on one of those properties, because I think there are throughout some areas that you don't have stations on, and maybe that might be a good show of good faith and partnership for them to maybe allow us to have one of those there, because a brush fire on, or some of those gullies and stuff on agricultural land or some of those areas is way different than, you know, up where I'm planting trees at ten thousand feet in the burn areas. So, just, just an idea, and maybe we can reach out and offer them to do a partnership with us, and if they're really about land management and partnership, this would be a great opportunity. So, just, just an idea. Thanks.
No, and that's a great idea. We're always looking for partnerships and ways to expand our footprint with the weather stations. The, and just to make sure that everybody understands, Buckeye is up by where the new landfill will be. Sometimes, the name is deceiving, and people don't know where Buckeye is, so I just want to make sure I pointed that out. But yeah, having more weather stations just gives us more data to look at, which makes it more accurate, right? And, and part of the complexity and some of the problem that we've seen over the years is wildfires weren't that prevalent in the grasslands, the lower elevations. After the Marshall Fire and last year, Idaho. elevations. After the Marshall Fire and last year, Idaho had numerous fires that threatened agricultural property and burned a lot of their ag land. And so it is prevalent, like you're saying. And whatever we can do to help out with that definitely is a big win for all of us, so.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Kavales, you had a couple more questions. Please go ahead.
Thank you. What is our understanding of other jurisdictions, either in Colorado or elsewhere, that have implemented this zone-based approach to fire restrictions? And in particular, are there lessons learned in terms of how we, the complexity of communicating this with folks? Because I, I would anticipate, you know, we get people that are upset about fire restrictions. And I don't know if they'll be happy or if it's specific, or they'll be confused and they'll be unhappy. So I guess the question, Justin and team, is other jurisdictions doing this? What have we learned, especially in the communication, you know, with our, our community members?
Yeah, another great question and something that I've been trying to figure out and make sure that I am talking with my team and trying to figure out what we can do to solve this issue. So Boulder County, they implement zone restrictions. They do it a little bit differently because they do it, I think it's Highway seven, is split east of Highway seven and west of Highway seven, is how they do their fire restrictions. So they have a major roadway that divides their county where Laramie County does not. You could use two eighty-seven, but two eighty-seven doesn't, isn't consistent throughout the county. There's a lot of forest on the east side of two eighty-seven as you go towards Wyoming. And then, you know, it turns north and south, or turns east and west. And so it's not consistent. But they do a lot of messaging and a lot of it on internet, social media, those types of things. And again, that's what I'm working with from the county folks, from the IT department to the public information officers to try and figure out the best way to make sure we message this out. And I, I think the other piece is, and obviously, since we're the Sheriff's Office, we'd be the ones enforcing it. The other piece is to work with our deputies and make sure that they're going out and educating in the beginning and not necessarily enforcing, but really trying to do a good job educating the public and giving them informations or us creating business cards that have a QR code so that they can go to the link that we've created to get that information for the next time. But a lot of it, instead of just going out and handing out a ticket, really talking to the community and saying, hey, we have zone restrictions, which we didn't always have. And I don't know that it'll be any more confusing, because restrictions have always been confusing for the public and even our law enforcement officers when the Forest Service goes in, but the county doesn't. So in my mind, this will help us align with everybody a little bit better and make the enforcement a little bit easier. So in reality, I do think this will simplify things, knowing that we're going to have to do a really good job at educating the public. And also understand that we have to be patient in the implementation of it and not expect people to go out there and understand what we're asking of them until we've done a good job educating them. So I think that's Tim and I's job to make sure our deputies are going out. And, and they know what they're talking about, too, when they are talking to the community. So we'll have to do a training program with our deputies and other law enforcement throughout the county to make sure they understand what we're, what we're looking for.
And if I can jump in there really quick. When we started brainstorming this concept, one of the, one of Sheriff Fan's first responses to me was, this at least has the potential to be a little confusing. How does somebody know right where they're at and stuff of that nature? So Justin's been working very diligently with county IT to establish what is not yet, but we hope to be very soon be a public-facing website where somebody can plug in their address or their GPS location, and it will, it will put them exactly where they are on this map. Because as we can tell, these lines do not follow obvious geographical features like highways, I twenty-five, Highway two eighty-seven, something of that nature. Now, Commissioner Shadak McNally, I agree with you that it would be better in a more public-facing, commercialized program that just automatically flashes at them. I don't know as we have explored that. We certainly can. I don't know how difficult that would be. But we do intend to have an option for anybody interested, kind of like signing up for LIDA or any types of NOCO alerts, that they can go on here. And it's very, very easy at that point to identify where they're at. And it actually puts a location on the map of the address or their location. So they'll actually see how close they are to what boundary.
Is that a question? Because Commissioner Kavales had a couple of questions. Is this related to?
This is related to that. I, I agree with you. It's commercialized. We have all this place around AI with Visit Estes Park and other things. We know that they track our phones. But I have on my, you know, I'm traveling using Google Maps or something or just my phone. I get near a school zone, all of a sudden an alert goes on my phone. You're in a school zone, even though they're flashing lights. It's like, here's a school zone. Or, you know, those, I just know the technology is like happening to me when I get in certain areas of, hey, there's, you know, construction zone, slow down. But the school zone ones, I figure if we, if they can do the school zone, could we do this? That's why I'm asking. So, thank you.
All right. Keep going, Commissioner.
Thank you. My last question, and it's really intended to communicate a recent constituent email. And I suspect that person is listening. We have thousands of people listening to this work session, and she's one of them. But, and she offers constructive feedback and is a very engaged citizen. She was expressing, in light of, hopefully I can capture this, and it went to all three of us, but in light of all the uncertainties around who's impacted by some of the potential changes at the federal level, as it relates to wildland firefighters, as it relates to people who apparently have lost their jobs, who work with the US Forest Service, the National Park Service, the BLM, et cetera. And given that we have kind of a year-round fire season, this individual was suggesting, would it not be prudent to have fire restrictions year-round until, well, I think that's the thought of this individual. And also, this person is, I think, very supportive of what, you know, the approach that we're discussing here today. And I guess one other variable that this person commented on is that a high percentage of the fires are made by, you know, are started by humans. I think she may have put out eighty percent. I don't know if that's accurate. And then I think she mentioned that when the Alexander Mountain Fire started last summer, we didn't have fire restrictions in place. We put them in place after that. So anyway, there's a, there's a bunch in there. But the essence of it is, in light of all the uncertainties, who's working where? Is it impacting wildland firefighters or mitigation efforts? And given that, you know, it's year-round fire season, should we be just slapping a fire? I'm sure you'll love that one, Justin. Fire restrictions the whole time, as long as we can direct the folks to you.
No, perfect. No, and another excellent question and something that we've tossed around a few times at the Sheriff's Office and even with the US Forest Service. You know, here's the hard part of implementing year-round fire restrictions. If it's, if it's raining or snowing and you're in fire restrictions, people lose a lot of confidence in what you're recommending. So there's been numerous times where other agencies have been in fire restrictions and it's pouring rain. And we have a lot of people call our office and complain that other agencies are in fire restrictions and it's raining. And we're like, we can't do anything about it. You know, call the particular agency. And they're like, well, they're a bunch of idiots. And we're like, I can't, you know, like, they're just out of abundance of concern kind of type of thing. So, so that's one piece of it, right? And then the other piece of it is, if the conditions are right, people should be able to have a campfire if they want to go out. Campfires are, are one of those things that are, as a kid, as you're growing up, that are memorable, right? You take that away just because of a concern for fires year-round. But even like right now, if you're outside and you're cold, but you want to have a fire, you should be allowed to. And even when the conditions are right and it's green out, you should still be allowed to have a fire. It's hard to tell people they can't have a fire. And so it's that balance of doing it with concern, but also being allowed to be able to have that choice. And the Alexander and Pearl Fires, both of those, they were started by humans, but fire restrictions would not have prevented either of those fires from igniting. They weren't campfires. They weren't, it was just, one was arson, basically. The other one was somebody being irresponsible. So it's, those wouldn't have been prevented. And most of the human-caused fires that I've seen over the years were errors. And we've seen fires start during fire restrictions, when we are in fire restrictions, from camp stoves, things like that, that weren't allowed, but we still have them. So, yes, they work because they remind people that the fire danger is high. But they only work when we use them systematically. So.
Thank you very much. I just wanted us to be responsive to this individual. And I suspect she's listening and was able to hear your informed response. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Justin, it seemed like you had some, maybe some financials you wanted to share. Did you say that you wanted to share something additional or?
Oh, no financial stuff. This doesn't impact us financially. But the one thing I did want to show is this is, and this isn't finalized yet, so I realize the text is really small. But there's a lot of things not on here that have been completed. But this is the public-facing website that it will look like when it's done, that Kevin Keaton was referring to. But it shows the different zones. And the light green is showing that you're not in fire restrictions. If you click on that area, it'll tell you that the short name, and it'll tell you fire restrictions, ban decision, and none. When that changes to fire restrictions, it'll go to yellow. If it's in fire ban, it'd go to red. So it's color-coded for the zone. And then the municipalities, Rocky Mountain National Park, the US Forest Service, which is the darker green, and the yellow, which is the BLM, they have their own fire restrictions. So we have links for them. Or if you click on a Forest Service, it has their official website to go to. So we've tried to create a website that people can go to and get the information they're seeking. And Tim, like Tim said, you can go and type in your address of the campground or your house and find out exactly whether you're in restrictions or whose jurisdiction you are in, and reach out to them if, because obviously, county fire restrictions are only for unincorporated. So any municipality, the city of Fort Collins, Loveland, Berthoud, Wellington, if they want to be in restrictions, they can or cannot. We can't affect those areas. But we did have a place. The other thing that I did not mention is that the nice thing about aligning with the National Weather Service is even there's a red flag warning, when there's no burning allowed because of high fire danger, these zones align with those red flag warnings. Where in the past, if there was a red flag warning, we basically said across the county, you can burn. But if there's a red flag warning for below six thousand feet, it'll just show up on this map as well and say, no burning. And it'll be bright red, and people will know they can't burn. But the other two zones may not be in a red flag warning. But us aligning with the National Weather Service makes the messaging a little bit more clear as well.
Yeah, I would agree. Lauren, any, any questions or comments?
I guess I was wondering, we have a lot of fire districts that fall in the county in unincorporated areas. I'm sure you're in communication with them all the time. Have you run this, this concept by them? And what are their thoughts? And how might they help us push out this message about, I imagine we could, might number the zones or, you know, something to make it easy to identify where I live so I can look for Zone Two restrictions or whatever?
Yeah.
But I'm curious about the fire districts.
We have not reached out to them yet. I wanted to have most of this ready to display to them, because a lot of the same questions that you all have, they're going to have, especially for the folks that live in their communities. So by having the answers before I presented to them, we do have a all-hazard summit that we do every year on, at the Sheriff's Office, coming up in May, I believe. And we will, we'll let them know, we'll do an email before that, kind of saying what we're proposing. And then at that summit, we'll collect any concerns and cover that, just to make sure that they have a chance to communicate any concerns that they have. But definitely, one of those last steps that we need to do. So thank you for bringing that up. But yeah, it was on my radar as well. I just didn't have it in the presentation.
I wonder if having a, some kind of a communication campaign that you could roll out to them to show how you might communicate with their residents or what they might use, might be helpful in May, too. And I know our staff can help with that.
No, and that's a great point. The public information officers are always great, making sure the message is consistent across different agencies and partners. So I'll definitely be relying on them to help my, deliver the message to everybody.
If we do end up with these zones, could NOCO alerts let folks know when there's a fire restriction in that, in Zone Two, or whatever we end up calling it? I wonder if LIDA might be willing to put that word out by text, or, you know, they have the, they have the communication capacity. I don't know if this is an overreach.
Yeah, it'd be, the biggest thing we could do is like a keyword or some type that's not a, it can't be a nine-one-one notification, because it's not live-threading. But definitely, somewhere we can do it on their website. And again, have an OEM and have an Office of Emergency Management, LIDA, everybody else delivering our message for us as well, so that if people go one place, they get the same message, right? So it's working with the partner. And LIDA's been working with us on the GIS stuff as well on this and evacuation. So a lot of, a lot of good partnerships that are making a lot of headway.
Thank you.
The last part I had was, I briefly just touched on, you know, aligning the wildfire strategy and looking forward to the future. And this is probably a future discussion with you all. And I don't know whether it's another work session or how you want to address the issue. But it's really defining how the county is going to move forward with the wildfire strategy, not, not getting rid of the wildfire threat, or, but how do we minimize it? And what's our strategy moving forward? There are a lot of priorities across the county and at the Sheriff's Office. And how do we make sure that the priorities are aligned with the strategies that we've identified? So, you know, and these are things that we do now. But there's a lot of technology that's coming out. And it's like, what technologies do we want to align with? What technologies are going to make us more efficient at what we're doing? And so just, I just highlighted some of the different things. We've talked about the AI fire cameras, in communication with the satellite monitoring, companies that are monitoring new starts from, from space. There's also a company that's using sound technology to differentiate the incipient stage wildfire from sound than other nature sounds, and using AI to do that. So there's a lot of technology out there. And which ones do we have the money to fund? And which ones do we think will benefit the county the most? So doing a lot of work at that, but also, like we talked about, a twenty, twenty-person crew this year, hopefully get that to twenty-five people in the future, adding more overhead staff to my program, just so that we can deal with these complex incidents. But really, just kind of looking at that and then a collaboration with federal and state partners, which you all mentioned today, continue to look for grant funding and wildfire mitigation, working with Josh from the Office of Emergency Management, figuring out mitigation measures and what we can do there. And then, we're going to notice integration in existing emergency systems, like LIDA is a great example. They work hand-in-hand with us for evacuations and the alerts and all those kinds of things. So just a lot of, a lot of great partnerships that we're able to be successful at wildfire. Unfortunately, homes still burn, but in my mind, I think the county is pretty successful at what we do. But there are steps that we can do to be better. And I guess that's some decision or some discussion I'd like to have in the future, how we want to do that, too.
You know, I was at a meeting with Justin back in the fall. He got an alert on his phone. He was able to see smoke, sent a team out, put the fire out. It never reached an acre. Those are the kind of things that are much cheaper for us than having to put a fire out and have the, the impact on residents and that sort of thing. Happened to not be in forest land, I think, as we were talking. But those are the kind of investments we might consider making that in the long run might, might be really beneficial to the county. So it'd be good to talk more about that.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
So, right now, I was supposed to be testifying on an AI bill. It's happening right now. I have some concerns. And I've been advocating because it says in the bill, only firefighters can get access. And I said, what about sheriffs in response? And so I've been advocating for that. But it was for one company. And I have a concern about one company having controlled all the cameras in Colorado. I'm also concerned about privacy. And I think there is a way we can work on this together. But I think we have to also think about AI and not, we need to be careful about how much data and stuff it has. And I think we have to think about some privacy things. But I agree with you, there is a lot of benefits to it. But I think we have to talk about that. And I have a lot of concerns. And right now, we're hearing that, and I have a lot of concerns, and right now, there, we're hearing that a lot of the fire chiefs really are not in support of this certain bill, so, um, I just, um, I think you're right. I, I think with us, um, having some funding constraints and some questions and uncertainty right now, having a, a really strategic and collaborative partnership discussion about, um, we've got to do what we got to do to take care of ourselves, um, because no one, I don't know if we're going to get a lot of funding from other, from the state and federal folks, but we can work smarter and work together to find ways to be innovative and address this because we know we're going to burn, it's just, I would love us to burn in a way that is beneficial and, and at least cost, um, to homes and life and safety. Um, and so, I, I, I'm open to that discussion, but I, I do want us to, I, I, I have caution and, and concerns about embracing full, full throttle all the AI. I think we have to be, ask a lot of questions, and that's what's happening right now at this, in this, hearing it, that I was supposed to be testifying in, so, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavales, any last words before we close out here?
A very quick last word question, and that is in your, in your timeline, you suggest implementing this approach, uh, before the next high fire danger season. What is considered the high fire danger season these days?
Hmm, that's a great question.
I think July, but I don't know.
The, uh, you know, I, I would say typically it's still the, the June, July, August is where we see the majority of our larger, uh, more consistent fires. So, hopefully to have this finalized and signed off by everybody by May and then roll it out in April, or, sorry, April and then have it rolled out by May so that we're ready for June, July, and August.
All right. Anything else that you wanted to share with us?
I don't think so.
Well, great. Uh, we look forward to the conversations about technology and how that can help. Clearly, um, you know, if that can, um, save dollars and, and, and save acreage from, you know, being on fire, that's really important, you know, as we look at tightening budgets and, and at, at all the levels of government, it, you know, it's a great tool for us to be able to use, so I look forward to those conversations, you know, with the caveat that, um, that, you know, we do have to be careful obviously about privacy and, and who, who has access to that data, but it certainly can be a tool that we can use to help us, and I think we should employ all the tools that we can to help, you know, help us within reason, so, um, so thank you for presenting today. Thank you for this information. I think it, I love the idea that it, these zones are aligned with what people are used to with the National Weather Service, you know, I think people have that familiarity with that system, so I think that was really smart, um, because there just aren't geographic or, or man-made kind of, I, you know, ways to, to carve up the county, um, so I think that that was really smart, and I think people do understand that, so, you know, you know, obviously keep communicating with us and as you communicate with the public and, you know, how, however we can push that information out as well is really valuable, but I do think that being able to target certain zones is, is, will be really crucial, and it will make sure that we're not, you know, that there isn't maybe so much overreach. Like you said, I think people still, people in, in the West enjoy to, to recreate, having a campfire is a big part of that when you're, when you're camping, and so we don't want to restrict people unnecessarily, and, and you've always, you know, done a really great job of finding that balance, so, um, I think this is just another tool that we can use to, to be a little more accurate, so, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, with that, it is two twenty-seven, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, it is two twenty-seven, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, it is two twenty-seven, and we're adjourned.